I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. I think everyone got a couple pieces of documents here, both from the Chief of Police regarding JT Hightower's request for extended alcohol consumption area for the Beanbag Tournament, and then a fenced-in area from Carboni's on the Car Cruise Night. So, I would like to add those into our consent agenda. Okay, besides that, anyone have any additions or corrections, questions on the agenda? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Passes 5-0. So Ken, I guess you're just kind of taking all of these, right?
A big chunk of them, anyway. All right, bear with me here while I get everything going. All right, so the first item we have here for review is a public hearing that will be for the vacation of certain easements in the Platte of Eastland. This is a request made by Wet Development. The city council took a look at this request, excuse me, initially back on August 2nd, 2016. And if you recall, when this was first brought up, we were going through the platting process for what was determined to be Eastland Third Edition, which is replat of the areas that you see on the overhead here. The original portion of Eastland was platted back in 2007. And these easements that are shown in the dark gray outline are easements that exist on current lot lines within the Eastland Platte. And as you know, these two areas were proposed for replating and was ultimately approved for new lots for townhouses to divide up those total 25 units. And with the replat, the easements do not go away. They existed for the old lot lines for the Eastland Development. So we have a separate process to go through for the vacation of these easements. At the meeting back on August 2nd, the council did, as you know, did a public hearing and then held the introduction of the ordinance to vacate these easements. And what we will look for here tonight is simply to hold that public hearing. And then the second item, which is actually our action item for this agenda item would be to adopt the ordinance that is in your packet titled An Ordinance Vacating Certain Easements in the Platte of Eastland. We do put out a public notice for easement vacations to all the utility companies. We did receive one comment. And the center point will not be here, but they did submit the letter, which is in your packet dated August 4th, that they have no objection to the vacation. With that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor and the council to hold the public hearing.
Okay. So, just one quick question, Ken. Would this then be like the second reading?
This would be the second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that in mind, I guess I'll open the floor to a public hearing. If there's anyone who'd like to make comment on this item in regard vacation of these easements in the Eastland Edition Number Three. So if there's anyone who has a statement to make, you can come to the microphone and state your name and your address. Okay, looks like we have no comment at this time, so I guess I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Next, we have to take care of the action on the second reading of the ordinance. Does anyone have any questions for Ken at this time? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance and the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
I got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Amy Jerk. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Thank you. Next, Ken, request for variance.
All right, I have a short PowerPoint for the summary of the variance item from the Planning Commission meeting on August 24th. I'll run through that here for you. Again, this is variance number B2, 2016, for a rear setback variance that was from industrial building addition in the Industrial Park. The applicant is Mike Pika. And as I noted, the subject property is located in the Industrial Park at 503670, basically right across the street from Electromed and the Fitness Center. It's light industrial Ione zoning. The building that does exist on the site is 46 feet wide by 60 feet in depth. The applicant, Mike Pika, is requesting to construct an addition that's basically 20 feet added on to the rear portion of the building. And basically follow the same design, height, color, building materials, et cetera, as the existing building. The reason that this recorded variance is that we have a normally required 40-foot rear yard setback for the Ione Light Industrial District. And this building addition would encroach five feet into that required rear yard. Again, the Planning Commission held their request at the August 24th meeting. One additional comment was received, and that was from the applicant, Mr. Pika, who noted that additional comment that he wanted to point out was that he is currently renting space from an adjacent industrial building owner in the Industrial Park. And he wanted to bring those items and equipment back into his building so that he had everything on his own property. So that was kind of the impetus for the request for the variance, to make it large enough that he could fit everything inside that he wanted to, and obviously handle some growth potential as well. So that is why he was seeking to go with the additional five feet needed rear setback and accommodate his needs, which to staff makes sense from that perspective. On the overhead, it's a little tough to see, maybe easier to see in the packet. As I pointed out, you've got the Fitness Center, you've got the Electromed Building, all the pinkish-purple color is the Light Industrial zoning district. You have the former EDA Mark Steel property directly to the east side. This is actually the building he's renting some of the storage space from today. And then obviously the subject building. There is a dividing line between two different zoning districts located here. There is screening in the form of trees and a fence already located there. We did not have the neighbor in attendance or provide any comment regarding the addition. But again, the addition is simply a 20-foot addition on the back. Here's kind of the detailed drawing again. Outline in red is the existing lot that exists today. The dashed yellow line is what would be the buildable area within all applicable setbacks in the Ione District. So currently, the building resides within the buildable area. But you'll notice that the rear lot line has to jog in where it gets a little narrower as you head to the north side of the lot. The applicant did look at making additions under the north side of the building. They would be in unusual areas in the building, either affecting existing parking, or just located in an area within the setback that is kind of right in the middle of the building, jutting out to the north, which is not ideal. Could be very costly and cause a number of building code concerns with doing that type of additions. So the logical area to build onto, and as the building was designed to is to expand to the east, basically just add on some additional structure to the building. And basically, after it's done, you should be able to tell that there was even addition done to it. So that's where you can see the five foot encroaching beyond the dash line, which is the 40-foot or setback. Couple air photos here for you. First one, you're looking to the property to the north, so your addition will come up later. So no building is immediately adjacent to that building addition area at this point. Just another view looking to the south of the property.
So who owns that property?
Directly to the east. It's Mark Steel. He sold that property to Mr. Steel a few years back.
Yep.
And we did not hear from him as well, I should point out. So that kind of gives you an overview, again, residential property to the south there. Few photos to run through again. Here's the existing parking lot that Mr. Pika did not want to affect with the building addition up in the north. You can see the way the roof line is, it would have been quite an issue with extending the roof line out. Time to our building official, it may not have even been feasible without substantial investment and changes to the supporting structure of the building. Some more views of the building. You can see the rear portion of the building here. They currently do have a shed. That shed was moved out of the site the Saturday before the Planning Commission meeting, so that's where the building addition will be. They don't have to have that shed on the property anymore. And just a couple other views. Again, they marked the rear property line with stakes, which is kind of a helpful visual as well. So basically, the building extends 20 feet out to the east side there. Staff and the Planning Commission do recommend approval of the resolution that would approve the variance to all the five foot encroaching into the existing 40-foot rear setback for this building addition. So that's all I have from staff report on this agenda item.
Anyone have any questions for Ken regarding to this variance? Okay, if not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the variance.
So.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Janet Tuma. Any other comments, questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Next on the agenda, we are very honored to have Michael Thompson here today from the Assessor's, Scott County Assessor's Office. I think everyone remembers that when we did approve the new allocation of assessment bills for, I can't remember where it was, was it a two or three year?
It was about three years, 17, 18, and 19.
Three year. You're with Scott County Assessor's Office. We thought it'd be a good idea to see if Michael could come and join us and kind of just explain to him what the Assessor Office does, and then answer any questions for us. So Michael, thank you very much for coming by.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, and thank you very much for inviting me down here to talk about the assessment that the county performs for your city, a good portion of your city each year. I am going to just give a quick overview of kind of what all we do each year, and then maybe give you a little bit of a market update. I thought as long as I'm coming down here, I might as well give you some current events on some statistics and some of what we're seeing in the marketplace. And then I'm going to finish it off by talking a little bit about the contract that you approved, and what goes into that, and how we determine the pricing, and how we believe that it's a very good value for the services you're doing. So with that, I'll jump right into the general assessment process. And I always like to start with the timeline. This is intended to illustrate one cycle. And so, from the start of the sales study period to the time the person who paid their second half taxes based on that sales period is about three years. So for the taxes in 2017, we looked at sales between October of '14 and September of '15. We set a value of January 2nd, '16 based on those sales. We conducted an informal appeals process. We sent notices out in March, alerting taxpayers to the new valuations. And at that time, they can call us and informally appeal. Then there's a county board appeals option. Values are finalized in June. And the rest kind of marks where we are today. We're just in a period of time before we will be sending out the estimated taxes for next year, which were based on that assessment process. So there's another slide coming up here where I talk a little bit more about the appeals. We can include the tax court discussion.
So Michael, the notices that go out, are those what you paid for taxes in 2017, or...?
The notices that will be coming out in November will be the estimate of what your taxes will be in 2017. The notices that were sent out in March only told you your new value. So at that time, because there are no preliminary budgets really to work off of, all we have is value at that time.
Okay, thank you.
And so throughout the year, from the assessor's perspective, the cycle would be after that county board in June, when values are finalized, we go out and statutorily were required to review 20% of the properties each year. So we physically go out, we walk up the down streets, we knock outdoors, we get into some of the properties, not a whole lot. There aren't always people home. And then there's also the property owners that write to not allow us to come into the property as well. So this is a very important part of what we do. It's what we spend the most of our time on. And if we're looking for changes, if we're trying to verify the information that we do have is accurate, to make sure that we have an equalized property assessment. Once we're finished with that, sometime towards the end of the year, maybe September, October, we do receive permits from all of the jurisdictions, each city and township. We have the permit records that were taken out over the previous 12 months. And we visit those properties specifically. And this is on outside of that twin-tile ground review process, because we want to make sure that if change is made, we capture that if there's any impact to the property's validation. All throughout the year, we're validating sales. So Scott County, we may have upwards of 4,000 sales a year. And we're reviewing those to make sure that those are good benchmarks for valuing all of the property in the county. Even though we only go out to about 20% each year, we're still revaluing 100% every year. So whether or not anybody came out, we're still going to look at the sales data. And we're still going to do market analyses. And we're still going to send you that new notice with a different value based on those market conditions and trends that are apparent based on sales in our area. Department of Revenue works very closely with us on the sale validation. They're the oversight agency that verifies that we are doing what we are supposed to. And every single sale that comes into the study, after we've made a determination as to whether or not it seems like it should or shouldn't be used as a benchmark, the Department of Revenue makes the final call to say, yes, we want that to go into the study, or no. And some reasons it wouldn't would be if maybe two brothers exchanged their property, that's automatically out of the study, because we know that there could be some undue influences on the sale price. So we want to stick with fair market, arms-length transactions. So at the end of the year, maybe in December, January, February, we really do all of our analysis. We're doing a lot of statistical review of the sales that occurred, comparing those to our assessed values from the previous year. So for example, in the city of New Prague, we have different neighborhoods that are segmented so that we can look at similar properties in the same buckets. We don't just say, New Prague is going to go up 3%. We actually would look at the different neighborhoods and see if maybe this marketplace over here in this neighborhood is performing differently than another area within the city. Then we use on that notice out, of course, and that kicks off the appeals process. As I mentioned, there's a couple of months after those notices go out, and the notice will have a phone number you can call, where you can call the appraiser, exchange information, bring things to their attention. Maybe you had the property for sale and you couldn't sell, or things of that nature. And then we can discuss it and do an individual review of that property value. So the assessment is considered a mass appraisal approach. And then when we get into the appeals, we look at individual properties, and we try to make sure that what we had done in the mass appraisal was accurate. And we also have the county board in June, and then the tax court. So this is a question we get a lot. And it has to do with, what if I'm not here, or what if I don't let the appraiser into the house? And so I did include it here for the taxpayers' information. When we come out there, we'll leave a note if nobody's home. If you don't receive the note, or you don't respond to the note, typically, we make assumptions believed to be inappropriate. And that's how it's listed in state statute as what we should do. So a misconception sometimes is that we assume it's the best house in the neighborhood, or we really do something to increase the value if you don't respond to us. And that's not true. We simply make estimations based on what we know of that neighborhood that we observed from the outside of the property. So property owners should review that estimated value each year. If, for instance, you took a permit out to finish your basement, we came out to your property, and you did not allow us, and maybe you weren't home, you didn't respond to the note, we would estimate some basement finish. And anything we add, any value that we add to the property due to new improvements, comes on the notice, singled out as value-added to improvement. So that's another chance for that property owner to look at it, and review what we're doing with that valuation. I've already gone through the appeals process, but I did include this slide because there is, in the second step, there's a variation between open book and a local board. New Prague conducts an open book hearing, which is actually held at the county offices. It's much less formal. The property owner doesn't have to get up in front of a crowd and have their appeal heard by all of the residents or whoever's in attendance. They can just meet with us with our property information available, maybe schedule an inspection. It's just kind of an extension of the informal appeals process with a specific time to meet those. And all of the cities within Scott County operate with the open book and Spring Lake Township as well. And then the tax court, you don't have to do any of these prior steps. You can go directly to tax court. You have until April 30th to file a petition on the year the taxes are Moving into the valuation data and current market trends, this is a very high-level overview of what we had done since January 2nd, 2016. As you can see, the only study that did not have at least six sales, which is a benchmark for the Department of Revenue, was the apartment study. So that, these are county-wide numbers. And you can see on the net changes, apartments were up over 10%, commercials up over 12%, industrial was up over 13%. We've seen just a ton of market activity in those areas. And we really had to bring those areas up significantly, as you can see, as far as the valuation goes. And then you can see what those changes resulted in. The median ratio is comparing our assessed values after we made changes to what those sale prices were. So if we just focus on industrial, there were 12 sales in the study period. We increased values 13 and 1/2%. And that brought our adjusted median ratio when comparing our assessed value to the sales to 99%, 9.2%. It's considered acceptable for us to be between 90 and 105%. And these are, again, high-level reviews. So they break this down by city, by residential, and all these other categories, by individual city and township as well.
Is the process the same when market values go down?
Correct. So we did have many years, and I might have some data that goes back far enough in this presentation to show, where we were significantly applying decreases to the valuations as well when market indicated that was necessary. Moving into the residential market discussion, here are some factors affecting what we saw for that previous year leading to the assessment. Forcolder filings continue to be down, the supply of homes for sale continues to be low relative to prior years, and interest rate rates are still low. With that said, we still did have some markets, some segments within the county where we decreased some values. And we do that based on, as you asked, if our, when we compare our assessed values to what the sales came in after a particular jurisdiction or neighborhood, if we're higher, we'll also lower those. So the forcolder filings were down again 21% from 14 to 15, way down from the peak in 2008. Almost, we almost got up to 1,000. This is my data, of course. And then I have it broken up by jurisdiction. New Prague showing a 60% increase in forcolder filings, but it's really, relatively speaking, it was only five forcoders compared to eight. So the number of 60% seems drastic, but the reality is it's relatively flat. If you compare previous year numbers, the peak for New Prague was 40 forcolder filings in 2008. Quickly, some Scott County data. These are the number of homes for sale at one point in time total in the county. And you can see that at one point in time, it was up over 16, approaching 1,700 homes were for sale on the market at one point in time back around 2008 and 9. And today, we have less than 100, a lot of those are due 750. Months of supply of homes for sale. So this is a statistic that looks at, at the rate of absorption based on the current amount that are for sale, how many months do we have of inventory? And right now, it's right around a little over three months of inventory. If nothing new came in on the market, everything would be absorbed in that month. Part of the absorb. And then average days on the market when somebody lifts their property for sale, we were all the way up over 160 days back in 2010, and now we're under 80. And some of those areas, this is county-wide, and so some areas are much lower than that. And then median sale price. We went all the way down to 100, we wish, on the back of order, for median sub-price in Scott County. New home permits, I like, this slide is interesting to me because you can see that the peak here was actually around the 2003, 2004 mark. And this doesn't include townhomes, but it was up near the 22 to 2300 new home permits in 2003. And the slide started well before the crash in the housing market, which is widely accepted to be the 2007, 2008 timeframe. That's about the time that these new home permits bottomed out, and it was a five-year process to get there. So this actually started well before the housing market crash. And it's, and it's just kind of leveled up. Residential lot inventory. So available residential lots in the entire county is nearly half of what it was four years ago. What this means, of course, is that we've had a lot of new homes built over the last four years, and not a lot of new lots created or splatted. And then I've broken that data out. And for New Prague, and this only includes the Scott County side, I do not have this data for La Souvere. We had seen 25 new home permits in '14, 14 new home permits in 2015, which is down again. And the lot inventory, as we've kind of calculated, and it's not an exact science, because there are lots in the city that maybe an adjacent owner has held for 10 years, because they just like to have that big a lot next door, or a bigger lot. And they're not trying to sell it. So we're not trying to include that in this data. This is what we believe to be kind of the actively marketed lots available on the Scott County side. And as you can see, we simply averaged the absorption of 25 and 14 homes in the last two years. And then we applied the average of those to about 19 lots per year to the inventory and the rest. Well, that's about six years. If no new plats are created at that pace over the last two years, that would be a six-year inventory. This is a chart where I mentioned it goes back far enough where you can see where we were significantly decreasing that. So for the county and the New Prague average home value, it peaked in 2008. it peaked in 2008 payable. So, that would be the January 2nd, 2007 assessed values. And we're not quite back there yet, so that was at 205,800. We were all the way down to an average value of a New Prague of 150,000 off of that 205. And then we've come back up to about 192. So, there's still some room to make up there to get back to those peak values. There are a couple of areas that are very close and now reaching their peak values. So, this is the only data that I believe I have that does have La Sueur side. And the caveat there is, I only had access to their preliminary data for the 15 assessed values for taxes payable and 16. And then I have our data is more updated, so, but combined, they're for the same year of data. And this has been requested a couple of times now over the past year for jurisdictions wondering, what is the breakout of our estimated market value by these categories? So, it's a little bit easier to look at when you line it up this way. This compares a New Prague to the other cities in Scott County. Again, the La Sueur data isn't included in this one. So, this is estimated value, which obviously, that includes exempt. So, there's a lot of big green bars on this chart, and there's more taxes being paid on any of that value because, of course, it's exempt. Savage's green bar is obviously quite smaller because they don't have, they cooperate with the neighboring jurisdiction for school. If we take the exempt out and just go to taxable market value, New Prague is a kind of curve kind of tied with garden. I think there's some alving there as far as the amount of commercial industrial tax base that is taxable value. So, I think that's traditionally considered a good thing for spreading out some of those property taxes on commercial businesses, not just on residential. Any questions about any of that data before you did the assessment contract? So, this is a very high-level summary version of how, two years ago, it was less than two years ago, we arrived at the costs attributed to the assessment services that were running. So, we look at assessment activities. Things that I talked about earlier, such as going out, looking at the houses for the annual review, doing the permit reviews, doing the sales validation. All of those kind of things are kind of rolled into that category. We allocated that based on three groups. The four smaller cities, the three larger cities, and then the townships. So, we looked at actual cost in that group, and then allocated to that group based on a parcel count. And the reason we did that was the cost of assessing in township was going to be different than in the city. And in a larger city that's more dense, it's going to be different than a small city. Tax court appeal efforts. This is another large cost that is not considered part of the normal assessment activities in the sense that we go through the informal appeals process, and then the formal boards of reprocesses. But the tax court appeals require kind of a different level of expertise. So, we've got on-staff appraisers, and we have contracted with experts, as needed, to deal with high-dollar, mostly high-dollar, commercial industrial appeals. And in fact, in New Prague, we have an appeal on chart, and we have, we have court dates coming up in about four months on some of those appeals. It's a very large deal, and it consumes a lot of our appraisers' time to work on, and our attorneys. And we're hoping that we can come to an agreement on that and the other appeals we have with the city. We do a very good job of making that. Additional appraiser staff costs. This is the cost that comes along with early employing staff. So, you have training that you have to, you have costs incurred for training, you have costs incurred for holidays, costs incurred for vacation time, all of those kind of things that, if not for the assessment activities that are requiring us to hire appraisers, those costs would not be incurred. And then the non-sellerian benefit costs are gas, vehicle usage, facilities cost, all of the things that come along with that. And then we do take some dollars out of the equation, and it ends up where we build, I think, or we do not build, 20 to 25% of the actual cost. And the reason we do that is we know that if the city did choose to contract with somebody or create their own assessment office, there are still costs that the county, or there are efforts that the county still has to go through and perform because by statute, they are still in oversight. The county assessor is still in oversight over any local assessors. And so, there would be costs to that. And so, we're trying to account for that in some way. And so, that altogether equals the proposed contract amount. And so, there's that slide lays out for you each step for each of these cities and townships in the county. As I mentioned, we don't bill for the entire cost. The full assessment budget is roughly 1.4 million, I think that's rounded up, and that works out to about just under $25 per parcel. The 2016 assessment bill for New Prague was 35,300, which works out to just under $19 per parcel, if we never billed it 1,870. And that, that is that difference. Comparing it to other areas. So, it's not only important to my department and to me that we do a very good job for the taxpayers, and we have a fair and equitable assessment. It's also just as important that we do it, and we're doing it fiscally responsibly, and giving the bang for the buck that we know that everybody deserves. And so, we do like to look at what other costs are from our neighboring counties. And we aren't the lowest, but we are slightly below the average cost when it comes to counties that are performing 100% assessment on their own. When you look at the three counties on the right, the average goes up. And that could basically be explained by what I had mentioned earlier. Those three jurisdictions all have local assessors in some way, shape, or form. So, Hennepin County has an example. They do not directly appraise Eden, Prairie, Bloomington, Minneapolis. All of those cities have their own city assessor and city assessment office. But Hennepin County still spends a great deal of time overseeing all of those assessments, coordinating with those people, and administering kind of the collection of values so that it can get to the auditor for taxation and taxing assistance. So, we did, I also include, this is from the city of Minneapolis. They put this together. And they do a similar review of the cities within the county, of their average per parcel cost. So, the three-year agreement was based on, the analysis we did less than two years ago, which was a two-year agreement for 15 and 16 with New Prague. And we did not do a completely new analysis. We intend to do that about once every five years where we kind of start from scratch and redo everything. And in the interim, we try to say, what are we expecting for cost increase? And the 4% figure, and I know that it's a little different each year we can do rounding, but we intend it to be about a 4% increase each year, and that's countywide, not just for New Prague. It's driven almost entirely by expectations for salary increases, staffing costs. And where we come up with that is, we don't have a current contract for Scott County employees for 17. It's the unions in negotiations right now. But if we look at the last few years, there's been a 1% cost of living for all county employees. And then there's also a process by which there are performance raises, and this is in lieu of step raises. So, most people are familiar with the step increases. Scott County utilizes a pay-for-performance, and the way that that's structured in the last couple of years, I would say, I believe it's 75 to 80% of the employees in the county receive at least a 2 and 1/2% increase for their performance, with the cost of living as 3 and 1/2%. So, that, that's the line. 90% of our budget is staffing, salary, benefit costs. Now, there are also other projected increases. Every time a new house is built, our workload increases. And it's not just for that year, because we're ongoing. Appeals associated, and the annual review that I mentioned where we look at 20% each year. So, this information, I understand, was provided at the last meeting. And it does show a steadily rise in assessment costs. There's no doubt about that. And I think that we are doing everything we can to limit the increase in cost. We're trying to become more efficient. We're trying to implement some practices like mobile, going more mobile, being able to do more electronic reviews, and saving, creating efficiencies that way, cross-training with other departments to use some sharing of employees. So, I do think this could be worse. One thing I would also point out is, when we compare where we were six years ago or seven years ago to today, it looks a little bit skewed because we did, back in 2012, implement quite a significant reduction. And whether or not that was the right thing at the time, I don't think the costs necessarily went down commensurate with that. I think that the county was bearing more of the cost for those three years based on a different way that the analysis ended up. And really, to the taxpayers, it's no different because if the cost isn't in the city budget, it's in the county budget. And I did, I did get some information that I wasn't able to include, but 27 counties in the state have what's considered a true county system, not just La Sueur County. So, the county board has adopted a resolution that says there are not going to be any more local assessors. And in order to do that, they have to bear all of the costs of the assessment. So, a city or township in La Sueur County cannot just go and hire their own assessor. Scott County is one of 15 counties that isn't, has not adopted that resolution, but does perform the assessment for every jurisdiction in the county. So, that leaves 45 other counties that haven't adopted it and have some kind of mix of some of it's done by the counties, some of it's not. Of course, in order for that to happen in Scott County, three of the five county commissions will have to pass our resolution, of course. So, with that, I'll stand for questions or comments.
Any questions or comments for Michael?
How many employees do you have in this department?
We're kind of an integrated department with the auditor, treasurer office, but if I, if I limit just to the assessment personnel, it's around 13 or 14. And that's because we do have some people that kind of are allocated to a couple of different areas, so it's not an exact FTE, but it's about 13 or 14.
Any other questions or comments for Michael? Michael, again, I would like to thank you very much for coming out tonight and enlightening us with this information. It's, I think, is very useful for us. And thanks again for, for your hard work.
Thank you very much, Brad.
Thank you. Next, Ken, are you taking this?
All right. I'll try my best to give a good summary of this again. And it's a little unusual. This item in particular arose out of a memo that city attorney Scott Riggs had actually sent to us, and had also been in, some information put up by the League of Minnesota Cities. But in a nutshell, there was recently a law that was signed by Governor Dayton that allows cities to be exempt from Minnesota's, what is called the Partition Fence Law. This is actually a law that cities typically, historically, have never had to deal with. I've been a planner for 15 years. It's never once came in any city I've worked at. But nevertheless, this law that was first enacted in 1905 had been used relatively recently by some suburban property owners to solve their fence issues. Now, back in 1905, when this law was actually passed, it was used predominantly in rural areas where you had cattle and things that would go from somebody's property and wander over onto somebody else's property. And this law was meant to appoint fence viewers that would determine if a fence should be put up to keep the cattle or livestock or whatever on those person's property, and then, you know, who's going to pay for the fence and that type of thing. Well, must, I don't know background exactly, but some attorney along the line must have realized, hey, we can get our fence dispute in a residential lot taken care of through this statute. And what it would require for cities is, the cities would have to appoint fence viewers to make the determination on if a fence should be installed. Is it over the property line, et cetera? And initially, when Scott sent this to staff back in June, kind of then, why would we want to act on this so quickly when we had the issue come up? And in another city that Scott was working with, literally the day they were looking at acting on their resolution, they had somebody that brought in some action that wanted to utilize the Partition Fence Law that would have forced city councils to appoint fence viewers and to get involved, and very costly. And what ended up being the impetus for this was, cities were getting sued when their council members, acting as fence viewers, were not being found to have made a favorable decision for one landowner or the other. So, Governor Dayton did sign this law that basically says, look, if you've got two property owners, and the combined total of the two lots is under 20 acres, pretty much taking out your residential city lot, which really wasn't the intent of this law, that you don't have to have this fence viewing process applied to those suburban, urban lot situations. Basically, keeps it rural in nature for these agricultural purposes of keeping your livestock in your yard. So, in effect, the law allows cities to pass a resolution that would say, if the two lots combined together are under 20 acres, it would exempt the landowners from being able to utilize that law thereby exempting the city from having to participate in the fence viewers. So, Scott did draft up a memo regarding this. If you read through Scott's memo and the one from the League of Minnesota Cities, they pretty much say the same thing. Scott did draft the attached resolution on the backside of the cover memo that outlines that if we would pass this resolution, it would exempt property owners that are combined under 20 acres from utilizing the statute. We have fence ordinances internally in our zoning ordinance. We have, obviously, situations typically, if it's an argument whether a fence is over a property line or not, that ends up being a simple matter. We do not issue fence permits at this time largely because of the property line dispute issue. We have people that pop up fences overnight without permits, even when we did require them. Doesn't make them not have to follow our rules to keep it on their property, build it, you know, no taller than our ordinance allows, et cetera. But we just don't need to have this statute applied that gets into this like the legal process to monitor that. So, Scott Riggs is recommending, and staff is recommending, adoption of this resolution that is titled, "A Resolution Exempting Adjoint Property Owners and Occupants from Minnesota Statute, Chapter 344, When Their Land Considered Together Is Under 20 Acres," so that we don't have to get involved in these particular landowner fence dispute issues. So, that's in a nutshell. I don't know that we would have necessarily run into this anytime soon, but having said that, would rather not have to deal with it at all. So, that's our recommendation.
Guess I'll look for a motion. I guess I'll look for a motion to adopt the resolution, opting us out of the...
Second.
Motion by Dave Brusick, second by Amy Jurk. There's no other comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposition? Pass this by zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, are you going to handle...
Yeah, we got your item right away. I think I might have told you at 6:30. Yeah, sorry. That's supposed to be no issues at all. So I'm going to send you a kind of a letter tomorrow.
Honorable mayor and council members, I bring before you tonight a contract for renewal with Minnesota Criticators. We have been in contract with them since 2007. The previous contract duration was 2014, 15, and 16. At the end of the year, it expires. I would ask that council entertain renewing this contract. It provides for the same services at no additional cost or increase for those contracted services. The company, Minnesota Criticators, had provided us good service over all of those years, adequate service. I don't see a need to change that at all. The contract was reviewed by all departments that are participating with the contract, and Chief Stoli from Belle Plaine ended up re-typing some of that contract. The contract was provided from the company, missing a couple of items, excuse me, but after reviewing it, he put it out to all the other departments and we reviewed it and it appeared that, for the most part, it is the same contract that we signed previously. So I would ask that the council entertain renewing this contract.
The only thing I would change is have my name spelled right if I was going to sign it. Would be just, just a little FYI.
I can do that. On the copy you sign tomorrow.
Jim, are you happy with...
Yes, yeah, they're providing a good service. We do talk to them and I know it's in the, in the contract itself about notifying them if we do want changes in the service or sending a written directive to them. And the only thing we've had to talk to them about is contacting us or letting us know some of the information coming back to the department once they pick up an animal or something, that we want to know that the animal was picked up and who it belongs to in case it is a, a problem animal, that we would issue a citation for that violation. But otherwise, no, we've had no problems with them.
Okay.
There is a 60-day termination clause if we want anything out of the reasons, so we have a provision to address that.
I'll make the motion to the contract.
I got a motion by Amy Jurk, I will second it. So if there's no other comments, and we'll approve the contract with the correction of the spelling in my name. All in favor say aye. Any opposition? Pass this by zero. Consent agenda, remember we did add two pieces to the consent agenda. The Carone's fenced-in area for the 16th, and then on JT Highway's also the 16th, looks like they're, the 16th today, they're having a beanbag tournament. Any questions, any items of consent agenda? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Dave Brusick, second by Jenna Tuma. If there's no other questions or comments, all in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay, we're in miscellaneous. We'll start with you, Mitch, anything? Well, he's good. Patrick? Patrick's good. Jim?
I do not have anything, just preparing for Dozy P celebration, getting our additional personnel in place and who should be set to go.
Yeah, everything going good so far in that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Ken?
Nothing more.
Mike?
One quick item, I'm asking the council as we take a look at, we've got a special meeting scheduled next Monday, September 14th, on trying to establish the preliminary 2017 property tax levy that in light of the efforts and time expended with the arbitration hearing that we're dealing with is that if the council schedules would permit, and I'd like to ask for a one-way delay in that if, if that would fit in your schedules, that I have the outline of what we need to, to do in the budget, but I'm not able to spend as much time with that as I would like to in preparations for this week's arbitration agreement. So I don't know if you have your calendars with or not, but I'm asking if there's the possibility that that might work in your schedules.
So then would we approve of that, that meeting? Because don't we have a council meeting on the 19th?
Our next meeting was on the 19th and we talked about having it on the 14th so we could re-adopt on the 19th if we had to. That if you did move it to the 21st and wanted to have further discussion, we would have to schedule another special meeting to do that because we have no regular meetings. But that would still leave you time if we had to move it, let's say, to the following Monday for any reason to, to adopt if maybe, if you didn't think there was, if through the discussion on that that you wanted additional items included or modifications or changes made or whatnot, we'd have to set another... We'd do a continuation of that meeting to date certain, we would not completely adjourn out of that, but we'd find a date that was workable and adjourn to that date certain is what we'd do, so it'd be a continuation of that if you felt it was necessary.
But if, if everything went well, we could adopt that on the 21st?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I am out of the country. 23rd through 2nd.
We don't need to.
Which is fine.
Sorry, I apologize for the request.
How does everyone's calendars look?
24th for me. I do not know.
Okay, that's for me.
I don't know.
Okay, I don't have anything right now, so...
Is there a better night that week that would work?
A week of what?
The 19th. Yes.
Well, we have a...
Council on 19th. On the 19th, yeah. Thursday I cannot...
Yeah, I, the only thing I have that week is the council, so I'm, I'm pretty flexible. So if you, Amy, want to check and get, let Mike know, and then if, if there's a problem...
Even for some reason that didn't work, then what do you, what do you want to do for plan?
Try Tuesday.
Tuesday, 20th?
That works for me.
I'll let you know on Tuesday, 20th, Mike.
Yeah, I'm open the 20th or 21st.
The 20th or better for me, the 21st I have to question.
Okay. Sean, 20th for you?
20th is fine.
Okay, Jenny will check?
I think it's good, but I'll double check.
Okay. And David will check?
What I'm hearing right now is prefer the 20th.
It sounds like it. First choice would be 20th.
Second choice is the 21st, but try to do it on the 20th. Same time work for you, 6:30?
I, which, yep?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good. Anything else, Mike? How did it go today?
Long.
Okay.
We start earlier tomorrow, about 8:30. We had Mr. Walczak today, the engineer with S.H., Ted Fields that reviewed the facilities plan tomorrow. We have Ron Brusick, Ray Christensen finish up with Ted Fields and myself. Thursday, we have John Peterson for Wolfman, and Mike Holm, they're an expert engineer on the straight line.
Okay. Good. Well, I'm glad it's you and I. Anything else, Mike?
No.
Okay. Sean?
No.
David?
No.
Jenna?
No.
Amy?
No.
The only thing I have, Mike, is, is, I know you're dealing with the arbitration, but I'd like to maybe by the end of November, would that be doable to get like a summation of how much the arbitration costs?
I have it already.
Okay, except for the recent bills?
Correct, I have everything up to the last billing, which...
I just kind of want to...
Which we've got through, that I am trying to, to see, and I've asked our attorney to be present on the 19th to give the council a recap and overview, and I can have an update on those numbers already then.
Okay. I didn't know if you'd get the bills ready from...
I won't have the final, but I have what we've heard up to...
Okay.
But I can try to recap, it's all set.
Yeah, I just threw off, I'm just trying to want to know what this costs.
I have a project to lead.
Okay. Since Mary Jo is not here, I guess I don't have anything else. I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second, second by Dave Brusick. All in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay, thank you, everyone.